And this is discussion on amendment of the Land Development Code to allow a house of worship in certain residential, commercial, and mixed-use transportation orientation zones. Orientated, Jones?
This is an amending ordinance to amend the Land Development Code to allow houses of worship as a permitted use in certain residential districts on one acre or greater, meeting certain setback requirements and green space. It also does the same thing in commercial neighborhood, commercial community, and commercial village activity center, changing those from special exceptions to permitted uses on one acre or greater. And also that in the MXT zone, a house of worship could be located on one acre or greater. But it also required that the approval, that that be included in the approval of the concept site plan. One other item that we would like to add would be allowing houses of worship as a permitted use in OB, office, business district as a permitted use.
Okay. Ms. Nicholas, questions? Can you come back to me, please? Mr. Smalls?
Thank you, Madam President. This amendment to the ordinance is now including, and I'm asking this in the form of a question, the mixed-use transportation zones and others that aren't previously a part of it. So we're just adding to the residential areas where houses of worship are currently allowed.
That's correct.
That's pretty much all I have. I just wanted to point the clarification.
Okay. Mr. Ricks, do you want me to come back to you?
I have a question. In terms of the areas they're going to be in residential areas, has parking, has parking issues been considered?
That's part of the recommendation, that a house of worship must comply with the parking space and loading area requirements contained in the ordinance, Land Development Code, and that the parking areas not be put in the front yard.
Not be put?
Not be put in the front yard of the church, but rather in the back.
Okay.
And the church would be brought forward to the front property line.
Okay. That was really my only concern, because I know in a lot of places where there's zoning for parking, you know, it can be an issue if there's a lot of, there are big events and things with the parking for residents that park on the street.
Yes, ma'am. And also as a condition, the applicant has to satisfactorily demonstrate that parking and traffic will not adversely affect the residential neighborhood, so you could not have parking up and down the streets, except in an unusual situation, but they would not be allowed.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam President, if I could ask one other question?
Yes.
Just sort of follow on. I'm getting a little fuzzy, Mr. Brock, here in memory, but under what circumstances are houses of worship, do they require a special exception?
Currently, a special exception is required. If you'll give me one, just one moment. They're currently required in all residential districts as special exceptions. What we're doing here is if it's located on less than an acre, or if it's going into a structure that is on a lot that is less than an acre, it would remain a special exception. But if you had a lot of one acre or greater, then it would be permitted use, and you would just have to have a site and landscape plan approved by the planning commission.
Okay. So this one is for permitted use, and forgive me if I haven't read this in every word of this, but does it make that distinction in this ordinance?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm fine. Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Manzi, are you happy with this?
It allows churches as permitted uses in residential zones, which is a request that we had. So it actually expands the area where they're permitted. It does not require special exceptions everywhere. Excuse me. The only areas that we're maintaining requirements or not allowing churches would be our, the commercial zones where restaurants are located because of a circuit court case in Prince George County, which has been determined to not allow churches to waive the 500-foot restriction. I know that there's a move of course to try to change state law to allow it, and if that goes through, then we will probably revisit this to allow churches even in the commercial zones as a special exception. That way, they would be allowed everywhere. But this actually loosens up the ordinance to allow churches and doesn't tighten it up. Better than what we have now.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Brock.
Yes, ma'am.
And we'll be having the first public hearing on this on February 13 at 7:00 p.m. All right. Agenda item number one, we're going to pull for later discussion, probably at the work session when Mr. Les joins us, co-sponsored by Councilmember Ricks and Councilmember Les. Agenda item number two is ordinance number 1734, an ordinance to amend the operating budget of the mayor and city council for fiscal year 2012.
Good evening, Ms. Allen.
Good evening, Ms. Allen. This is our third amendment to the FY 2012 operating budget, as we do from time to time. This particular ordinance, beginning on page two, where the changes are reflected, starting with the revenue side, you'll see the decrease of $450,000 in police fines revenue. And that is what I've referenced as A, to try to provide you with notes for what is happening. Through the process of our annual audit, the auditors have provided a recommendation that because of the specified nature of the speed enforcement program, that those funds we should take out of the operating budget, create a special revenue fund, so there'll be easier tracking of those funds, of the use of those funds. As we've discussed before, the money is actually in a separate bank account, so it is isolated. We had two specific line items, one on the revenue side, one in the police budget, for both the receipt of funds and the expenditures for the processing fees, but they suggested that we go one step further and just pull it out of the operating budget altogether. So that's what this is doing here, and there's a corresponding reduction of $450,000 on the expenditure side from the police department budget. The next item is $25,000 addition. Once my office started administering the financial activities for the Fourth of July Committee, both receipting funds from their fundraisers and writing the checks for the expenditures that they make, there really is no clear way to budget that ahead of time, so we're just picking this up as we go along, amending the budget on each side, both the revenue and the expenditure side. The next item is the loans. As we were, well, this budget was originally adopted in April of 2011, and I think at the time, we had just begun or were in the middle of the process of helping the Laurel Volunteer Rescue Squad secure partial, part of their funding for the new rescue vehicle. So at the time, because it is our debt, excuse me, and we actually pay the debt service every month, excuse me, but recover that from their monthly contribution, it has to be shown in our budget. So again, corresponding revenue and expenditure for $106,990. So overall, the budget is decreasing by $318,010. So again, just moving on to the expenditure side, you see the corresponding $25,000 additional to the community promotions budget, which is where we, excuse me, have a line item that we use to charge the Fourth of July expenditures, when they buy supplies for their fundraisers and those types of things, the baskets for the basket bingo, and that, as well as payment for the fireworks. The next line, the decrease of the $293,000 is a net result of the decrease of the $450,000 for the speed camera processing expenditures, and a change in procedures with debt service for the installation of the red light camera sites. There was $157,000 below in the debt service principal that's being moved into the police budget, and that will be used as part of the whole red light camera processing costs. And again, in the principal and interest lines below 62-807 is the net result of the minus 157, and the positive is $94,000 for the rescue squad debt service on the big truck. And so obviously, keeping it balanced, it's a decrease of $318,010.
Mr. Smalls, do you have questions?
Not trying to draw this out, but I'm still not quite clear on the police funds. What's the advantage or benefit in separating, creating two funds?
Because that, those funds are, were legislated to be used for specific, very specific purpose, and because we actually now have to file a form, which the first year looked similar to a tax return, if you will, reporting how much we took in, how much we spent. And, you know, by adding it to the budget, it inflates it in a way that is just not accurate.
I got you now. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Is the lock cleaner, too?
Yeah. I was probably focusing on the number at first and didn't hear the comment, so I understand now. Okay.
Mr. Ricks?
So it makes your accounting system a lot easier when you're dealing with these types of numbers to be accounted for in different ways.
Right. Like I said, we had the separate line items on each side of the books, but this will keep it completely separated. And I think by the end of FY 11, because we had to keep accounting for the increase in the receipts, you know, our budget was over $31 million, but obviously, we couldn't spend those two on just anything, so it's not going to go into the undesignated reserves if it's not spent, and so it's better just to pull it out entirely.
So it makes it very clear as to what these funds are to be spent for, and it doesn't go into the budget in order to inflate it.
Right. And we can spend directly from that fund separately.
Okay.
You've actually answered my question I was going to ask about the separation, so thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Allen. Moving on to agenda item number three. Ordinance number 1735, an ordinance to amend the City of Laurel capital improvement program for fiscal year 2012.
Okay. I apologize. That ordinance is still in progress, is not ready for its meeting, so.
I'll take it up next time. Item number, agenda item number four, ordinance number 1736, an ordinance to revise ordinance number 1711, changing the bond sale from the 2011 series to the 2012 series.
This ordinance is just a matter of housekeeping. Ordinance 1711 was adopted in April of 2011, excuse me, to fund $2,860,000 worth of projects in the 2012-2017 CIP. However, as you know, this is a grouping of local jurisdictions that participate in this program, and there were some issues with some of the other jurisdictions that had wanted to participate, so they had to put off the bond sale, so we never actually issued the 2.86 million. So now, I think they're ready to move forward, but we need to update the ordinance, because it did specifically refer to the 2011 Series A bonds. I had to go through, change everything to 2012. So again, it's the same ordinance, just a matter of housekeeping.
And updating the years.
To update it.
Okay. Ms. Nicholas?
No questions.
Mr. Smalls?
I'm fine.
Mr. Ricks?
When is it possible that we're going to sell these bonds?
The representative from the state, it's the Community Housing, it's Housing and Community Development Department, looking for a May, early May closing.
So these funds will be available for us sometime?
In May.
Great to hear, May?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to agenda item number five, resolution number 2-12. Thank you, Ms. Allen. Declaring 350 Municipal Square and grounds as surplus property, no longer needed for public use, and giving 20 days' notice of the proposed conveyance of such property to Klingbauer Capital Management Limited. Kristi, or Bob?
Yeah, this is the, this is the requirement under the charter that we have for surplusing property and to allow the mayor to sign a contract for the property. We have a contract in hand that's been signed by the prospective purchaser of the mayor. Cannot sign it without surplusing, getting the authority from council, so that's what this does, is surpluses the property. As you all know, it's Municipal Square, so talking about residential development of the property, the first phase of the property will be approximately 130 units, I believe, or it's either 86 or 130, I can't remember which number it is.
Mixed use, about $130.
Yeah, and it's mixed use, it will have some commercial in it also. So it's an opportunity to take what is the old Safeway building, which was our, served as our police department for many, many years, and provide for a little more vibrant use down there. So the first process is for the council to surplus it, and then the second is what you're folks are going to handle by just authorizing the mayor to go ahead and enter the contract.
Okay. Ms. Nicholas?
I'm good with it.
Mr. Smalls?
I'm fine. I don't have any questions.
Mr. Ricks?
I'm more than fine. I've visited Main Street recent days and talked to a lot of people down there, and I find that there's a lot of support for this. I've thought about the $300,000 and looked at the three years since the other appraisal was done. I think that that's not only a good price, the 2.3 million dollars, I think that that also will allow us to consider doing some things on Main Street that maybe we hadn't done in the past, and I think it's a good way to show our support for Main Street, and I look forward to voting for it.
Okay. Thank you. Up next, thank you, Mr. Manzi. Agenda item six, the photo enforcement camera revenue request for expenditures.
May I ask, Kevin, it's about a mile long.
Mr. Fleming?
Sorry.
That's okay.
Your clerk. Thank you, Madam President. You showed that before you amended it January 28. The subject is photo enforcement camera revenue request for expenditures. As part of our budget preparation process for the upcoming budget year, we sat down and went over the, reviewed the state statute on photo enforcement revenues and what exactly they could be spent on, and we looked through each department. They provided information on what projects they would like to see funded through this revenue source that complies with the state statute with respect to being part and parcel of emergency services. We came up with several projects. Some of these, or actually, most of these are already in the proposed CIP that's been distributed to you, that will be up for discussion later on this evening. Most of these projects were put together with the thought in mind that we would be reducing the impact on the upcoming proposed budget. And with that said, I will go ahead and go down the list. The first project we have is the purchase of 20 mobile data terminals for the police patrol cars. Fifteen of these will be replacements. The program was started about seven years ago, and we have 15 units right now that are beyond their life expectancy. Five units would be brand-new at a total cost of $105,440. The next is the purchase of 15 MDT docks. These are the docks that actually are installed in the cars that would house the MDT units for $10,640. The third project is initial purchase of seven OSSI MDT client software licenses. In keeping with the state statute, the initial license purchase will be covered by the, or is proposed to be covered by the photo enforcement revenues, but the ongoing cost over the life of the unit will be covered by the general operating. The fourth project is the purchase of a ZIBICs dispatch console to provide for a supervisor station in the Police Department Communications Center. That's $24,416. The fifth is to purchase enhanced 24/7 telephone system support. This is primarily for the Police Department telephone system. Right now, we have regular business day support. If we run into a problem in the evening, which we have, we've had to incur additional expenses from the vendor to provide support after regular business hours. Under public safety, public safety facility maintenance, we're looking to purchase and install a 35-foot by 60-foot Butler-type building and place that on our property on Sandy Spring Road, the Parks and Recreation Maintenance Facility there. This would house the new command unit, as well as the rehab and rehab/canteen unit. Right now, the canteen unit is occupying the wash bay at the Public Works Department. Our command unit is occupying a position in the fire department's base, and the fire department is, while they've been very generous in letting, keep it up, keep it up there, there's a lot of discussions about they're going to need that space back soon, so. These units have to be stored in a conditioned space, especially the new command unit. It can't be exposed to a wide transition of ambient temperatures, because that will induce the electronic components to build up sweat, and sweat shorts out the equipment, so we need a facility to park these in, so. This would include a generator for this facility at the cost of $217,000. Item number seven is to purchase and install a whole building electrical generator for the Robert J. De Petri Community Center. This will complete certification requirements for emergency shelter operations. Right now, we have the ability to put a temporary transfer switch in there and bring in a rented generator on a tractor-trailer, but the, even though we have arrangements with a contractor, it would still take anywhere from 24 to 48 hours to have that installed. This would basically complete generator, the generator demands for all of our emergency shelter facilities. In the shop area of the maintenance facility on the Parks and Recreation Maintenance Facility, we're looking to install a sprinkler system at $60,000. This particular area of the facility houses equipment that is used for emergency operations. It's all gas and diesel-fired, so we have concerns for fire safety. Public Safety Fleet, we're looking for the purchase of patrol and response vehicles. $200,000 is what's been allocated, and our Public Works Department has been requested to basically shop that out to find the best price they can, and based on the prices that come back, we'll adjust a number of vehicles, but at minimum, we're looking at five patrol cars, three marked, two unmarked, and we're looking at at least one emergency response vehicle, that would be an SUV-type. Public Safety Traffic Engineering, we're looking to purchase and install traffic pedestrian signal upgrades to eliminate, I'm sorry, we're purchasing and installing traffic and pedestrian signal upgrades to eliminate pavement loop detectors, and these loop detectors are basically a conduit with wires that are installed in the pavement at all the intersections for traffic signals. These loop detectors sense the presence of a vehicle, and they're what actually activate the signal itself. It detects the presence of a vehicle and then tells the computer inside the traffic signal to go through normal phasing. The problem we have with these loop detectors is that in the wintertime, where we have deflection of pavement through freeze thaw, these detectors get broke, and they're not readily repairable. You have to send a crew out, they have to mill the pavement down, bring a saw, saw cut the space for the detector, install the detector, and then put asphalt back over it. So we're looking to replace them with microwave detectors that are mounted on the mast arms or the span wires of the signals. We're also looking to provide pedestrian signals with walk timer displays. These are now required, so we're looking for $40,000 to fund these two improvements. We're looking for $70,000 on item 11 to construct sidewalks and curb and gutter in areas where none exist. One project in particular is Van Dues &amp; Road, where we have a lot of foot traffic for the high school, where we don't, we do not have continuous sidewalk on that roadway, so we're looking to provide enhanced pedestrian safety along there. Item 12 is $10,000 to provide upgrades to existing streetlights and to provide installations of streetlights where the Public Works and the Police Department determine that we have low lighting issues. low lighting issues. Under the Emergency Services Commission, we're looking to provide $25,000. That would be used to supplement the Emergency Services Commission grant program. And last, item 14 is a deposit of $500,000 into a reserve account. I'll take any questions you have.
Thank you, Mr. Fleming.
All these comply with the state statute, so definitely, yes, it would be, the reserve account would be earmarked for only public safety expenditures.
For statute, right?
For statute, yes, ma'am.
Okay. On the Butler Building, could you explain that to me a little bit more? Is that a pole barn to keep the snow and salt off, or is there actually power running to it?
Oh, there would be power, water. We're not looking to put bathrooms in here, so we would have power and water to the facilities. It would have a fully actuated, fully actuated sprinkler system included in it, but definitely we're going to have adequate power because the two units that'll be parked in there are going to be on shoreline connections, and they'll be drawing power 24/7.
Okay. And the 15 computers that we're replacing, they're at the end of their six-year life at this point?
Actually, as I understand it, they have a five-year lifespan? Is that?
Our replacements, five years, or currently six years?
Six years. Okay. All right. Mr. Rex, do you have questions?
A couple. Looking at your replacement on the computers and the docks, if we already have docks now, aren't they, why do we have to buy 15 new ones?
Well, the docks themselves are built to fit a particular vehicle. So if you have a Chevrolet Impala, the dock that you buy can only fit a Chevrolet Impala. So over the years, some of the cars that we initially installed these in, like the Crown Vix, have been replaced, so we're looking to switch them out so that, in some cases, we have mobile data terminals that are sitting on a seat that don't have a dock, so.
Okay. The new console for the Police Department, is that console going to be dispatch-ready so that the supervisor could take over and dispatch if needed to be?
It will be fully functional, just like the dispatch console that is there now.
Okay, thank you. As far as the rehab unit building, will that building have a drain in it, and will it be accessible for plumbing so that we can hook up tubs for cleaning and that sort of thing, large pots?
At this point in time, no. We're looking to provide those in the existing building. We're not looking to construct a drain.
So I'd be able to hook that tub up that we bought in the existing building?
That's what we're looking for at this point in time. Understand that we have just, this week, sat down with staff to go over these, and they are now in the process of dealing with contractors to get quotes and look at feasibility. So at this point in time, the project is subject to changes as far as the scope, not the value, but we have some desires that we would like to see, but we don't think we're going to be able to fund those at this point in time.
I think it's kind of important that we have a drain in that building because we do have constant, from time to time, leaks.
Drain, yes.
Okay.
That's not a problem.
Okay.
But if you're talking about a sewer, that could be an issue. You know, if-
Probably talking about a sewer, I don't think. But we'll talk about that.
Okay. I mean, it would just be for water.
There's no kitchen that's going to be in that building.
No, I didn't say that.
So my point is, for pots and pans and other stuff, that'll have to go off-site or within the unit. There'll be a drain if you're washing, that type of thing, but not the other. It's probably the simplest way to state it.
Okay. As far as the fleet that we're purchasing, do you think we should buy more than one four-wheel drive?
We're looking to get as many as possible.
Okay, thank you.
Public Works is putting together a bid package right now that will be presented to this body for consideration shortly.
Okay, thank you. As far as the sidewalks on Van Dusen Road, are we looking at both sides or just one side?
Just one side.
And that would be on the south side?
That would be on the east side.
Okay. Thank you, that's all I have.
Mr. Sparsen.
Overall question, a general question. Marty, how's the determination made as to what items are actually allowed to purchase and what items aren't? How is that reviewed?
The state statute provides that the funds can only be spent on public safety projects.
And pedestrian improvements.
And pedestrian improvements, which I consider to be a public safety project.
Just out of curiosity, could you consider salt de-icer as?
No, it's not set up for consumables.
I see. Okay, okay.
What we tried to do here was try to do one-time shots, again, because this isn't a revenue that, it may fluctuate.
Right.
Could go away. That's why, again, as you also saw Michelle talk about the separate accounts as well, so people don't see that number there and think that we're going to spend it.
Absolutely. Right, I got you. Okay. On the radios, are these radios being retired or repurposed? I mean, they're, I'm sorry, not radios, computers. Are they going to be used somewhere else? I mean, they're at the end of a six-year, five-year cycle, but are they still operating?
Yeah, these are on the XP operating system, so we'll be looking to try and get some kind of trade-in. We don't think that that's worth it right now. eBay is $200 to $400. We will probably look at some of these to see if we can potentially run Windows 7 on it. We're not sure if we can. If we could get Windows 7 on it, we may look to keep some of them here, but for right now, we're probably looking to just surplus them, and it's likely maybe another fire police department would pick them up.
Right. Or, I mean, would there be a need, say, for Public Works to have computers in vehicles or?
I think out of the amount, there may be a number of three or four we may keep.
Okay, all right.
And that would, then that would really determine if we can run Windows 7 on it. XP is way gone, and we're not going to keep it. If we can't do that, it won't work properly, they'll just go.
I have an XP operating system on a city computer. I'd like to, Marty, thank you, Kevin. On the, we talked for a very long time about funding for radios and dealing with interoperability issues and that sort of thing. Has that been part of any of the discussion? I know we've made some purchases, but it seems like this technology changes weekly. And I certainly have to think that radios would certainly fall within the scope.
We have had numerous discussions about interoperability in the radio system, not only internally but externally. We have a path, if you will, that the IT department is following to outfit. In fact, they're in the process right now of outfitting the Public Works and the Parks and Recs and the administrative vehicles with a radio system that will be interoperable with the, I'll call it, the first responder radio system. That is set for right now. And you're right, the systems change and are upgraded almost on a weekly basis. A couple weeks ago, we couldn't have purchased a radio for the mayor that was small enough to meet his needs. Well, now there is one that we're considering purchasing for him. But we have funding set aside in the general operating budget and the CIP that is covering those costs right now. In the future, this funding source could definitely provide for, but at the moment, we're good to go.
And I'll just finally, with my last question, on item 11, the sidewalk curb and gutter, Van Dusen's the only area that's been identified at this point for future curb and gutter projects out of this fund? Are you looking at other areas as well?
Public Works has a, maintains a list of locations where there are no sidewalks, and once the project is done on Van Dusen Road, we'll be blowing the dust off of that and revisiting that list for other potential candidates.
Great. Okay, thank you.
All right. Just a couple of questions. These prices here, are these estimated prices or these are the actual?
These are the actual, with the possible exception of the Butler Building, the $217,000 lower contract. Right now, we're looking at that $217,000 to be the absolute cap. If we bump up against that, we're going to be looking at what we may shave from the project, but for all intents and purposes, all the others are based on quotes that were received by the departments that participated in this.
Okay. I was going to ask a question about the computers, but we've already asked that. Now, what happens with the cars? Are the cars sold, or, as you said, you all are going to be getting new vehicles and
What we will do, once the cars are received back at Public Works there, they will assess them, they'll determine whether or not they can be put back into our fleet as pool cars. And if not, then they'll go through the surplus property process to be sold.
Okay. My last remark is that just, you know, we're, I'm very supportive of whatever's going to make the police force safe and help them do their job at 200%, so this is good. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nicholas. All right, if we're okay with these expenditures, they're going to come up at our council meeting on February 13th at 7:00 PM.
There's actually two that you'll be considering this evening, the radio console and the, what is the other one? The MDTs. Those are two that we have quotes for, that we would like to contract immediately, so you should have the bid recommendations in your packet this evening.
Mr. Frost, do you have a couple? Is this the bid one he's already gone over?
Yeah, I mean, Marty's-
On the consoles?
Yeah, so we have the 20 MDTs, and then the console. Those are, the MDTs will be on state contracts, special PG price, Prince George's County pricing, and this is where we get all our MDTs from. They're about 25 minutes away up by the airport, very close, and they also do all the service for us, which is good. They're close. And the dispatch consoles, that will be sole source to ZIBICs. We're buying the identical console to what was put in when we renovated the building. So what you will see when you go in there after they come in is two more identical consoles behind them facing the wall. The only thing different about this console is it's going to have a couple more monitor capability on the top of it. That's it. Same color, same exact configuration.
Any further questions for Mr. Frost? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Fleming.
Thank you. What about the other, the 15 flip tops? You covered it.
Yeah, that was two.
Yeah.
Did you have a question? Well, I guess, because I'm looking at $105,440, which it was, but then it doesn't have the other 15 docks that he needs, and I'm wondering, does that come from somebody different?
No, it comes from the same place.
So the total price in is $105,440?
That is for the computers.
What about the other docks?
The docks are $10,000.
$10,640.
$120,000. That's $120,000. $120,000.
Oh, so that's going to come for us?
No.
Okay.
It's the same place, and also contract price.
Okay. I was just wondering if you were getting them at the same time.
Thank you. Agenda item number 10, ordinance number 1737, and ordinance approving the capital improvements program for fiscal years 2013 to 2018. Mr. McCullough.
Good evening, Madam President. I'm assuming that all of you maybe fully understand what the CIP is. If you want, I could do just a quick summary of what's in the CIP for the new council members, or I can just go right into the part that we need to have you consider for approval. Basically, the CIP is a six-year document that moves forward. Each year, we consider one year for funding, and then we have programmed out in the book the next five years as part of a six-year program, so it's a moving program each year. As you look through this, there's actually several sections that go A through H, and the first is obviously an introduction, which tells you some of the what, why, and how, and the second, which is existing facilities. It gives you a summary of all the facilities that we have. If you're interested in knowing where they are, there's maps with that. That tells you when they were constructed, when they were renovated, and the square footage, and the area of the land uses. In the area of growth and development, this comes from Community Planning and Business Services. They update this annually, and so there's always new information in there. Section D is the capital products by others, and we've added that into the CIP. We've been doing this for quite a few years. What we do is we talk with the people in Howard County and Anarundel County, Prince George's County, State Highway Administration, and we put in here a list of projects that they have in their CIPs that are adjacent to Laurel and have some impact. So it gives us a little bit of, it gives you all a little bit of an understanding of what's going on in and around the city of Laurel by our adjacent jurisdictions. Section E is the fiscal profile, which is updated annually by our budget people, Ms. Saylor, and then we get to section F, which is the project schedule. That's the area that you have specific input in, and it's what you'll be considering in the work session. It's all the projects that we're looking at for funding within fiscal year 2013. Now, there's not a whole lot of change this year, so basically, what we did was, when we met and were putting together this work, the project list for FY 2013, we looked at all the inputs that people wanted, and then we basically made a decision that came down from the mayor that we would defer all of the projects that were scheduled to be funded by the general operating budget to FY 2014. There are exceptions. The exceptions are those projects that you've already talked about, that Marty has discussed with special funding from the photo enforcement funds. There may be some other exceptions that are funded by others, such as maybe the parks. I'm not sure of this, would have to take a look at individuals from special funding that came from others. So other fundings are listed in here, so what you'll be looking at is basically the projects that are impacted by fiscal year 2013 funding. There is a special section, if you have your CIPs and you want to take a quick look at it, if you look at section F on page F-3, there are two pages here that are called photo enforcement fund. In trying to make this more transparent, to be able to identify which projects are actually impacted in the CIP and are paid for with photo enforcement funds, we have, this is a chart that was developed and approved by the administration for showing the photo enforcement fund projects. There are actually five projects here. These five projects that are listed on the two pages, F1, F3, and F4, are include, are included in that $1.4, $1.56 million that Mr. Fleming discussed. There are actually the projects that are listed on that sheet, on that letter, as projects nine through 12. That's only four. That's only four. And the reason there's only four there is because project number 11, which is construct sidewalks and curb and gutter to provide sidewalks where none exist, that actually covers two projects that are listed here. We've broken it down because we have project pages for both sidewalks in one category, and then we have a second project for curb and gutters. So typically, we would have two. The letter shows, shows one funding source of 70,000. Incidentally, that 70,000, and I appreciate the extra $5,000, the two projects that are listed in here actually only add up to the 65,000. So if you approve the letter with the various fundings, that adds an additional 5,000 to the sidewalk curb and gutter combination. Other than that, there's not a whole lot of changes to be considered. There are a, there are a couple of, there are three pages in here in the unfunded section. It doesn't have anything to do with fiscal issues other than informationally, there's an error. And I'll, and I'll give you an example on page F-49. On F-49, this is Calmer Drive, and it shows $100,000 in prior years that was approved by photo enforcement funds. That is an error. When we were setting these forms up to show a special line item for the photo enforcement funds, we had to delete an item. And where that item was deleted, we previously had a number, and there are three pages that, in this section of unfunded projects, that actually show prior funding from photo enforcement funds. I will make that correction and get a corrected page to you. That 100,000 is an error, it shouldn't be there, and that will be corrected. There's two other pages in there that have a similar type of thing. One of them is on F-77. That was the Public Works facility. That shows 893.3 thousand dollars. That should have been, that was paid for out of undesignated reserves, and that will drop down to the category of federal slash other funding. That will still be on that page, it just shows in the correct source. And the third one that had that same issue was F-22, which is, no, that's not right. It was one that had to do with Main Street. Main Street, that's on F-46. And again, there it showed 779,000, and that should have been federal others because that came from various types of grant funds that we received. It's been paid, it's a past issue, and so it's just kind of a houseclean issue. I'll get you an updated page on that one as well. So those three issues need to be corrected as a corrected page. After the work session, if you have other changes that you want to make, I can have all those admin changes made prior to the first council meeting on this. There's one other, there's one other item that I think we probably should change. We had a meeting with the developers for the property, for Walgreens, on the intersection of 198 and Route 1. And part of that agreement that came out of that meeting is that the developers would do all of the planning, all of the plans and issues. They want the city to do the concrete work on the ramps on the northern side of that intersection, and they would provide the funding for that in 5,000 dollars. I feel we can do it for less than that, but what I would like to do is administratively show that as part of the streets, streets funding project, add the 5,000 in it and show it as funding by others. Then when it comes up, it will already have been considered, and we can do it without having to have further delays. That's the only other change I see at this point. All of the rest of the projects are pretty clean forward. There are things that have come out of absolute needs. And if at some time in the future, there's some extra money that can be put back into the CIP. There are some of the projects that got moved to 2014, such as, we have a bridge annually. We have inspection from Prince George's County on our bridges. This year, they said that they need some additional repair work. We had $10,000 that we pushed to 2014. They will survive certainly until 2014, but when you push things like that back, the cost escalates, the deterioration also escalates. So if money is available at some point in time, they can make an amendment, would still like to do it. One other general comment is that with the bond funding, we had a number of projects that were in this year's CIP that's already been approved as part of fiscal year 2012. There is a section, when you look at the project sheets, there is a square block that's on the, on the right-hand side of the page, it's Block E. And in that block, there's a line that's called reauthorization.
Is this still the F-26?
This is in any of the F pages. You take any F page, and in the right-hand, upper right-hand corner, there's a Block E, it says appropriation and expenditure data. In that, we have a line that says reauthorization funds. And some projects that were in there for FY 2012 that were to be funded by the bond issue, once that bond money comes, that money will go to these projects that have already been approved. But obviously, if we're not going to get the bond money till May, we're not going to complete those. And so we would probably be able to start some of them. But this reauthorization is where that money goes. So it's identified, and we can continue to work on those projects even from the funding that comes this year. If you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer any questions concerning the CIP. I have, my deputy, Rob Farie, is here also tonight. And between the two of us, I think we can answer any questions that might come up.
Okay. Mr. Smalls?
If we go back to page F3, the photo enforcement fund.
Yes, sir.
I just want to make sure I understand that these are funds, I mean, these are projects that are being funded from the revenue from the photo enforcement. So these projects move out of the CIP?
Well, they're still in the CIP, and I, my understanding is that in most of the projects on the lists that Mr. Fleming proposed, if those projects are approved, then I would think that we would want to add them into one of this, expand this page here to include those. The CIP does include, it's a record of not only the funds that are provided by us, it includes funding provided by others, but it's projects that we do, and it shows the authorization of those funds. The last, the last section in this is called legislation, and that gives you a summary of all the funds that are approved by the council. And then it's signed, and that gives us the authorization form. So I think that anything that has a capital asset value that can be depreciated, even like the computers that have a five-year life, typically, that's an asset that can be depreciated, and that should be covered in the, in the CIP.
So as I'm going through the pages of the CIP, I'll see the projects that are on this page?
That's correct. There will be a project page for each one of those. And if we add some of these other projects to this photo enforcement fund listing here, there will also be a project page in the F section to cover those. And there are two ways that we can do it. We can add them, include them in this year's CIP, or later on, they can do an amendment and amend the CIP to include those. Or you can do it some other way, I suppose, by just adding it to the, to the city's operating budget.
So many choices. Okay. Mr. Ex.
Not totally confused, but a little. I know that we project fleet funding every year in order to keep up with cars.
That's correct. We have, we have an annual fleet replacement program. Typically, our annual fleet replacement program is for five, five new police cars every year. In the process of operating any kind of a police department where you have as many vehicles as we do, and as many miles that is driven on them, some of those vehicles are damaged, there's insurance claims. If the insurance says that the value is not worthwhile to repair it, then it goes in as a replacement. In this current plan, we have funding anticipated that annually, we would replace five police vehicles. There's also three vehicles that have been damaged beyond repair that need to be replaced. So we are anticipating, this $200,000 is based on estimates from state contracts that would allow us to provide six new police cars, some marked, some unmarked, one K-9, plus two SUVs. And that's, that would come based on the prices that we've got. That would be 165,000. In addition to that, to bring these cars up to, to put them on the streets, some of them are marked, most of them are marked. There's markings that go on, and there's also police special equipment, there's lights and various things that go in to bring it up to a fully operating police car with all the special emergency equipment. We anticipate 35,000 to cover the emergency equipment and the special markings, and 165 to cover the purchase of the vehicles.
Okay. And when we normally purchase these vehicles, what comes up, time to purchase every year, it comes out of the general fund, does it not?
Well, general fund goes into, the money that goes into the CIP, a lot of it comes, is transferred from the general fund. So typically, on a project page, the source of the funds would be general fund. By putting this 200,000 out of these photo enforcement funds, we're able to reduce the general operating transfer for fleet, for fleet vehicles by 200,000.
So in essence, so in essence, we're saving the general fund 200,000 just for this one particular?
That's, that's correct. Yes, sir.
And if we look at the sidewalk repair, we're saving the general fund 50,000 dollars, and so forth, and so forth, and so on. So we're basically saving the general fund a million and a half dollars.
Well, in some cases, there, without, without this photo enforcement funds, we wouldn't be able to fund some of those things. Certainly, certainly the specialized equipment in the building.
But I just wanted to clear my head that we are saving money even though we're separating the pot.
Well, we're, we're saving money in the sense that we are able to do some things that because of reduced funding that's available to the city, we would not be able to do, and we would have to defer some of this stuff if we didn't have the special funding available.
Several years ago, you recall that vehicles were purchased out of the operating budget. Okay, we found, I guess, seven, eight years ago, maybe, that it was easier to track those vehicles, compare them to the fleet schedule, by putting them in the CIP. They're programmed better, but the funding was always the operating budget.
Is there any program there that where you could lease these cars rather than buy them, and is everybody cost effective?
We have leased vehicles in the past, and I don't know if it's close to break even, it's not really.
It's a mileage issue.
For the most, for the most part, what'll kill you is the mileage.
I have, I have personally leased vehicles on, when I was, I was in the corporate world, I had a leased vehicle every year. And it was, would have been cheaper to have purchased it outright, but we like to do the leases because we got a new vehicle every two years.
The mileage thing makes sense.
But the mileage thing, when you turn them in, if you exceed the mileage, you actually end up paying more for the vehicle.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Ms. Nichols.
I'm sure I'm going to have questions later, I just want a little more time to just look this over. But I am for saving money.
I will be pleased to answer your questions whenever.
Thank you, Mr. McCullough. And this will come before the council on February 13th at 7:00 p.m.
If you see any other areas that you need, you want an administrative change on the page, let me know, and I'll get the ones that I've mentioned to you as corrections before the council meeting.
Thank you. On number one?
Yeah.
You and Mr. Lez are going to discuss it, and then it'll come back up before us. I'll speak to you about it after the meeting.
Okay, can we make it public?
We can make it public. But I would speak to you after the meeting.
I'd like to make it on the record. What is the reason?
You and Mr. Lez need to discuss it.
I want to know the reason, Madam President.
Let me speak.
Go ahead.
You and Mr. Lez need to discuss it further because it needs to be flushed out. One of the problems that's coming up is the legislation in the county, and the mayor would like to revisit this with both of you and discuss that legislation.
It's all one.
Okay. No further business, we're adjourned. I need your signature.